Good golly, this is...
You stand as you are able and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the school board meeting for the town of Speedway for May 13th, 2025. We are working from a 13-item agenda this evening, and the first item is to approve the minutes of our last meeting of April 8th, 2025.
Mr. President, I move that we approve last month's minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand, and that passes unanimously.
Minutes are signed.
Thank you very much. The second agenda item this evening is to approve our continued participation in the advanced placement program.
Thank you, Mr. President. This agreement that we do probably needs no explanation, but I'll go ahead and explain a few things. In 2012, Speedway Schools is a pilot school of the AP TIP program through Notre Dame. It really triggered and started our AP program that we've been doing now for almost 10, 11, 12, 13 years going on that. For the first three years, we were the original school to do that, and then after that, we've been the AP TIP affiliate agreement, which is for about $1,200, our school and our teachers in the high school are able to get professional development training and use best practice with it. So the best evidence we have is our value for this, is our success that we've had in this program. So my recommendation is to approve the AP TIP affiliate agreement.
Board's pleasure.
I move that we approve the AP TIP affiliate agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of our continuation in the AP TIP program? Seeing and hearing none, would all those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. That passes 5-0. The third agenda item this evening is the review of the athletic handbook for the 2025-2026 school year.
In your handbook, you have a, in your handbook, in your packet, you have a copy of the athletic handbook. There are three changes in that handbook that are highlighted there in the front of your packet in red. Maybe that's orange. The first one is the athletic program profile, and in other words, the conference that we are in. The conference we're in is changing as of this August, and you can see there in the, in the writing, the new members of the Hoosier Legends Conference include Speedway, Beech Grove, Greenwood, Indian Creek, Monrovia, Shelbyville, Triton Central, and Tri-West. That's one of the changes in the handbook. Another change is in the weight room rules. Back in the day when the weight room rules were put in there, it was all for people in athletics. So you couldn't go in the weight room unless you had a physical on file. Well, we have a lot of kids now that participate in our weight room that aren't necessarily in athletics. So physical on file, it didn't make sense. It was contrary to what some things that we ask. So that is stricken from that list of rules. And the third and final is the athletic department, under the guidance of Mr. Maple, back there has now gone to thing called final forms. It's an online process where you can submit your, you can submit your, your physical, your, your code of conduct, your transportation forms, and do that pretty expediently. So, and you can do that through this thing called final form. So those are the three changes in the athletic handbook. My recommendation is to prove it as it's presented, or take any questions that you have.
Is there a motion that we can discuss?
I'll move that we approve the athletic handbook for 25-26 school year.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I do have a question, though, and it's, it's really more of a background question rather than a question about the handbook, because of course, we would list in the handbook, the conference of which we are a part. But tell me about the change to that conference. Are, I should know this, but just, just, just far enough removed, that are all the schools the same class? Are they, I see we're now all public schools.
Correct.
Is that part of the agreement for the conferences, or?
Probably, you get Mr. Maple to speak, and he was one of the founding members of this, is...
I appreciate that.
Good question. So the current conference, the Hoosier, or new conference, the Hoosier Legends Conference, there's no prerequisite to be a public school. Obviously, that's what we are striving for, to get all public schools into that conference. Right now, we're at eight. Everyone's very comfortable with eight. I don't see us moving any further to nine or 10 schools, so we're going to stick at eight.
What's, what's the, what's the procedure for, what's, you know, majority, for approving a new school in the conference?
75% approve.
And remind me about class size. Are these all 3A schools, 2A?
Four-year, three. Monrovia would be a 2A school, and then Greenwood would be a 4A school. Everyone else would be three in the middle.
Okay. And so if the time would come that we would go back to being a 2A school, we would still feel comfortable competing in the conference?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion on this that we can have answers for? Thank you very much. Okay. This is presented, go ahead.
Can I ask one other question? I should have paid, I really only looked at the changes, and I should have paid more attention to. Could you remind me, Mr. Maple, where the, the, like, random drug testing, is that in a separate policy, or is that in here?
It's the school handbook.
Okay. And so it ties into that?
Yeah.
And that, that, so this doesn't affect that, that's unchanged as well?
That policy is any extracurricular.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
You want it approved? Because this is presented.
Yes, please. If you could take a vote.
All right. So would all those in favor of approving the 2025-2026 Speedway Athletic Handbook, please signify. That passes unanimously, 5 to 0. The fourth agenda item this evening is to approve Health First Indiana Marion County Award Agreement.
Mr. President, I'm happy about all these agenda items, but I'm really happy about this one. So this is, recommendation is to approve. This is the first time. A lot of times, we go through in a status quo, and it's from what we did in the years in past. This is new. So the recommendation is to approve the Health First Indiana Marion County Award Agreement between the Health and Hospital Corporation of Marion County and the school town of Speedway for May 10th, 2025, so it's starting now, and ends May 10th, 2026. This award is basically a grant that we went after with Bridge Builder Strategies. They helped us through this, and the award is for $113,135. And that will go towards nurse salaries and benefits. So there's a, my recommendation is to approve this grant for that money to help us out on the, paying our nurses.
Yes.
I move that we approve the Health First Indiana Marion County Award Agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'm curious about why the dates are what they are, as opposed to being tied to, like, a July 1st to June 30th, or a academic year kind of thing.
So we're at the mercy with the Marion County Health Department.
Okay.
And when we received this was after our, the board meeting when they approved it, and we just haven't had a meeting since then. I've sent an email saying, we'll have to backdate this, and they said that's not a problem, because they're not going to get to this for two more in the future. So we'll, I'll go ahead and backdate that and just make that note, that the date was a little fishy on that, but the money, we've already gotten the paperwork for that to, to, to get those funds.
I think I was just more, seems odd to end it May 10th, 26th, when the school year doesn't end until later, but...
Yeah. We'll have no problem spending it, probably in the first couple of months.
Okay. Thank you.
Relatedly, then again, you know, I've recently seen these memes, which are, like, equating May to December, in the craziness and busyness of, like, May is such a busy month, so therefore, I'm asking all these, like, dumb questions. Do we have a, have we hired any nurse?
It is posted right now. So you're on it.
So I...
No, you're on it. You're right there.
And so, yes, okay.
Is there any other question or discussion for this item? Okay. Would all those in favor of approving the Health First Indiana Marion County Award Agreement, please signify.
Like, yes.
That passes 5-0.
Thank you. That's great. For our corporation.
The fifth agenda item this evening is to approve the cafeteria pay scale for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you. This is another good agenda item for us, but the recommendation is to approve the 2025-2026 cafeteria pay. The updated scales enclosed in your packet, as you can see through, from step one all the way to 25 years. It's a 50-cent starting wage raise increase, and that's about what we've been doing in the past, from a quarter to 50 cents. So we feel very comfortable with this. We, we thank all those people that do this, and we think this is what we can afford and what we can do right now.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the cafeteria pay for 25-26.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the pay scale for the 25-26 cafeteria workers? None? Okay. Would all those in favor, please signify. That passes 5-0. The sixth agenda item this evening is to approve right of entry with the town of Speedway.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. The town reached out to me, and they're seeking to replace several non-functioning wells that have been identified. And there's three of them that have been identified, test sites within our junior high athletic area, so our junior high fields, junior athletic area. This agreement grants them permission to access and elevate these areas to determine whether they are viable locations for new wells. So the goal is to identify suitable spots that will not disrupt daily operations or facility use. So Mr. Roseborough and myself had a long meeting with the town, and we talked to our, to their attorneys through all this, and this is the right step to do for them, to at least come in to test, to see if the table is right for them. So my recommendation is to approve the right of entry agreement with the town of Speedway.
Yes.
I move that we approve the right of entry with the town of Speedway.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about the right of entry with the town of Speedway agreement? Okay. Then, all those in favor of approving the right of entry with the town of Speedway, please signify. That passes 5-0. The seventh agenda item this evening is a report on Speedway facilities.
Mr. Roseborough, Mr. Maple, I'll give you the mic here. And Brian, if you could put up the, one of the first slides here, we'll see. There we go. Let's, let's go ahead and do an intro before, actually, let's get off that. Brian, can you go back to Eric? Brian? Eric, just go ahead and start talking. There we go. Little intro where we're going with this.
Okay. So do we want to talk about upcoming projects, or where we're at with the current?
Let's go ahead and start, where is our practice, where are we at with Project A?
So, yeah, Project A.
Let's start with that.
Yeah.
We're going to show pictures of other things this meeting, but a verbal quick update, because people probably have been on 25th Street, and they've seen, we have some visitor bleachers that are up now.
Yeah, that's, so the east side bleachers are probably the most substantial part that you'll notice are changed in the last, since we met last, because a lot of what's taking place is inside the buildings now. The east side bleachers are nearing completion and should be complete by the end of this week. The west side bleachers, the pad, the concrete pad they sit on is formed, and the concrete for that should be poured tomorrow, and we're awaiting the slab to be poured in the maintenance building before the overhead doors go in. And that maintenance building is what sits kind of behind the fire station. Inside the building, most of the block is up, and the rough end for plumbing and electrical is pretty much all there. So, so they'll be finishing the block walls, and then paint and fixtures will be the next steps with that. So it's, we're kind of at the point where we saw a lot of things changing and happening fast, and it was really cool and exciting, and now you're not really going to see a lot of change, because it's all happening internally or underground from running utilities and, and actually inside buildings now. But the, like I said, the west side bleacher and press box are set to be delivered in the coming weeks.
And I think in the June meeting, we can come back with new pictures, because we'll have quite a few updated at that point in time.
I would say that the, the field itself is also complete. We had our walkthrough, and we'll have our, kind of learn the maintenance of it, meeting the first week of June. And the final layer of asphalt for the track has been poured, and that's got to cure before that rubber texture gets applied. And that's about a month, a 28-day cure time. So we're on day, I think, four of that. So that'll be another month before you'll see any change out there, too.
Are we still on time for our goal?
We are still on time.
Yep.
And we're on budget. The change orders have been under where we, we thought they were, where the bids came in at. So right now, the two big questions, yes and yes.
Yeah.
On time, on budget.
Okay.
Time on budget, and our contingency is still pretty healthy.
Healthy contingency.
We've used some of it, but it's still pretty healthy.
Project C, because it's a big field that's now blocking everybody from going in door.
Yep. So Project C then would be the oxygen, which is door 13, which is the current athletic entrance, which would be the southeast portion of the high school. They did start tearing up some of the asphalt. Because we have gotten the approval to do some of the site work, we do not have the ILP or building permit, so things can't start coming out of the ground. But we've already had the gas line moved. It had to be relocated, because it was one, running underneath where the current, or the new structure will come. The water line is next to be moved, so Myron Asium is currently working with the town of Speedway, Speedway Water Works, to figure out how that's going to get accomplished. So that'll be the next thing. Again, it's one of those underground things. You'll see a lot of dirt, but you won't really see a lot of buildings. We're expecting to have the comments back for that administrative approval from Speedway, so our architects are working on that, should be back on Friday. So the following week, we should have admin approval, and then all the dominoes start to fall with permits, which is a very good thing, and will keep us on our tentative schedule for Project C. So that's kind of where that one's at.
Okay. We'll move to Project B now, which is, is different projects throughout the corporation, and we have a bunch of pictures to show of kind of what it looks like now, and then Eric's going to do just a tremendous job of describing exactly what it's going to look like after.
Yeah.
No pressure.
Yeah.
All right. So Brian, we need you now. There we go. That's, looks like a floor.
Easy one to describe. So this is just an example. This is a, at the junior high. One of the things we're doing is a replacement of the gym floor. We have a lot of these areas where previous water damage has happened and had some buckling. The biggest issue with the floor and why we're replacing it is because, as you know, we have it refinished, sanded down, and it can only go through so many life cycles before you sand it all the way through it. And as you cycle through some of the pictures, we tried to get, that's more water damage. Now, the idea is we have all the water issues fixed, so that that damage won't reoccur. So this is, you know, prior damage, but it's sporadic throughout the gym. If you keep going, you can't, it's hard to tell if you don't really know what you're looking at, but those are the different layers of wood, and that very top layer is super thin, and that's the main reason we need to replace it, because we can't refinish anymore. Because you refinish anymore, you're down to the subfloor, which you can't play on. Not to mention, you're getting to the point of a safety issue where the planks start to come apart if you go sliding for a loose ball or whatever. You could potentially get splinters and all that if we were to sand again. So rather than go to that route, we're bringing it back to a nice new floor. So that's part of Project B. There's just some more discoloration and soft spots. You can see it's tried to be repaired in my shoes. And this is a rendering from what the court is currently existing. We're working with some of our technology folks, Eric Hoover in particular, is working on a complete graphics, graphics package. So as we do these changes throughout the corporation moving forward, we kind of have a similar font to pick from. We have the same color codes, and the browns and the golds, or yellows, and the same mascot. So he's been working with the group that'll be installing the floor to kind of come up with a design, and, and here's what options we have to kind of get some uniformity throughout the corporation, which I think is, is going to prove good in the long run. So next, this would be the front parking lot.
Of the high school.
Of the high school. You can just see a lot of the, where things have been as we cycle through these patched, pop, excuse me, potholes. Striping needs redone. So we're looking to have that milled and resurfaced as, to kind of coincide the town project of 25th Street. I was actually in the pre-construction meeting for the town on the 25th Street project today, and was able to make contact with the people that are doing that job and kind of get a game plan for what that would look like, and if it's going to make sense for us to do it at the same time, since our equipment's already there, can we save? Which is our ultimate goal. So that's the angle we're working, but we don't have official estimates for that, but that's, that's kind of the next step there for that project. And I think there's a couple pictures. You can kind of see just the overall shape that it's in, which is deteriorating. So it's, it's time to be addressed. Or maybe not see. No, we'll just skip right into this. So this, this is now moving on to Allison, which is one of the larger projects of moving away from what you see in that picture. And there aren't current units that exist to give you pictures of what, what will be, because those have to be designed and built, but this is what exists and what will be replaced. So this is currently in the, well, actually, in both maintenance areas of Allison. That entire unit will be going away. So in short, what that does is it, it converts and pushes out all the air, whether it be warm or cold, to all the, the classrooms through separate ventilation, which there's a couple pictures of that. All that'll go away. There's another shot. It's not real exciting. That's why we don't show a lot of pictures of it, but you can get the idea. That'll all be going away, and they'll be going to, set a multi-unit into seeing, basically, it's a stand-up unit that would go into each room. Man, we have, that's Newby Elementary's new winging has a lot of those, and that's kind of what Allison's going to, gives us a little bit more control. Here are boilers. So those are the two boilers that heat the building, and they are, you can't, again, can't really tell, but they are pretty massive. Things are a lot more efficient and take up a lot less space nowadays, so those will be condensed down into smaller, what they call pony boilers, which we also have in the Newby renovation. I think we have a picture of what that could potentially look like. The whole idea here, obviously, is we are, we have to fix them all the time, is issue number one. And number two, they are running at about 60 to 70% efficiency versus 90 to 95% efficiency. So what that means is all the electricity or natural gas that you're putting into it, only about a 70% of it right now is being converted into what we want, which is cold air or warm air. When the new units come in, would be much more efficient, so a bigger bang for your buck, a little bit more control and comfort in our classrooms. And probably the understated thing about this is the control system itself. Allison's on a kind of a standalone system right now, doesn't talk to our other buildings. It's hard to control. You don't have much control. Those controls will also be updated to match what we have at, at the other schools. So that's a, from my standpoint, a big, a big plus and a big way to keep all the teachers and students comfortable. That's an example of all the duct work that is leading from those units you just saw. All that'll go away, because it'll be in each individual room. So right now, those are all leading to each individual classroom. Those units that you saw pictures of are pushing air through that. So you can see that by the time you reach separate wings of the building, it's just, it's just not the way you do it anymore. And it's not very efficient. This is a current gymnasium unit, so you've probably heard of rooftop units. We talked a little bit about that in building C. One of the proposals would be a rooftop unit, or, this is a mezzanine unit, so it would sit on top of, you know, if you've been in the stage area, you kind of have the upper mezzanines. Another option would be to have this type of unit placed in Allison on the mezzanine versus the rooftop. Again, the next agenda item is talking about Stair Associates, who will do the design and what's best for our building, but this would be one of the options. That's a pony boiler. So those big blue things that we saw would now be condensed down into something about this size. And storage is at a premium in all of our buildings, so that's, that's another kind of side effect, helpful thing. And this is dirty, but it's a current vertical wall unit that we have in one of our classrooms at the high school. This is bigger than what you would need at Allison, but essentially, this would be going in the casework or cabinets in the classrooms at Allison's. So you have more, again, more control in each classroom. And that's me.
Is the junior high gym floor, is that the original 1936 floor that's just been grabbed?
I don't know that for a fact, but I would say there's no way. But maybe. I don't know. I don't know. I know the underneath part, so there's, there's layers of tar and other types of wood before you get to the playing surface. That stuff is all original. The actual stuff that you see that is painted and you're playing on is not, not the original 19-whatever 30 floor. But it's old.
I found that hard to believe, but I didn't. I know, I know it down at our last land.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty thin.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
I can just add, two rentals were a hot topic. We did meet, and we're working on scope with Edco, a company that does that, that the junior high from some leaky areas have been identified. So that is also in the works, as well as Thursday, we start the meetings on windows at Wheeler. So more details to follow on those, but they are in progress.
And just to reiterate, we've had multiple architects that came in and gave us the list for these, and we're going through box to box on what's fallen, what, what needs to be addressed for the school corporation, so.
Lot of meetings.
Lot of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so, leading straight into item number eight, which is to approve an agreement with Stair Associates.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to approve the agreement with Speedway Schools and Stair Associates for engineering design, document preparation, bidding, and construction phase services for the new HVAC units for 16 classrooms and the gymnasium, a replacement of the boiler plant at Allison Elementary. Woody Holm was the guy that did our rooftops for the gymnasium at the high school. He's a guy we trust. He knows our buildings inside and out. He's worked with Schmidt with Project ANC, so he'll be leading this. Although I believe if you remember him telling you guys the last time he spoke, he's on his way out to Florida, maybe, to fish some more, but he's going to stick around to do our project, so I'm happy. Is that close?
That's correct, yes.
Sorry, Woody, if you're listening, if you don't fish, but I think that's where you're going. Woody is just phenomenal, and he's going to be the lead on this project. So the recommendation is approve this agreement.
I move that we approve the agreement with Stair and Associates.
I move that we approve the agreement with Stair and Associates.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion about the agreement with Stair Associates? All right. Would all those in favor of approving the agreement with Stair Associates please signify? That passes 5-0. The ninth agenda item this evening is a report on our iRead testing.
I'm excited to tell you about what's going on with iRead. iRead were given to third graders and second graders this year, as we discussed in our previous meeting. There's a narrative of what I'm going to discuss, but the third graders, we had about 119 third graders that are in a cohort that we'll talk about, and 61 of those 119 did not pass. And 57 of those, 61 did pass and 57 did not pass. So they retook the test, and of those, those 57, 43 passed, so we are about 75% passing rate of our, of that particular group. So where does that kind of fit in comparison to years past? The cohort right now is about 88, 89% passing rate, which is exactly where it was in the last couple of years, right around 90%, the high 80s. But they do have another opportunity to retake the test. That's taking place actually in some buildings starting next week. And if they pass the test, then they're done. But if they don't pass the test, then there's another opportunity in the, in summer school to take that. Talk about second graders. All second graders, we opted in for them to take the iRead test last year. They took the iRead test last year. That's why that not all third graders took the test this year. And of those second graders that took the test last year, that 52% of those students passed the iRead, and it was a third grade level reading test, and 52% passed that last year. I'm happy to tell you, this year, we have 60% of our second graders that have passed the iRead test to this, to this point. Second graders will also have an opportunity to retake the test. Buildings are doing it differently. Some buildings are doing it before the end of the school year. Some of the buildings are doing it in summer school, so they will have one more opportunity. Second graders can only take it one more time. So if you, if you look in your, if you look in your charts and your packet, it kind of goes through the data that I just showed you. And, you know, the third grade, if you look at the one about that says 2025 third grade iRead, you can see the number, the schools and the number of students that, that, that took the test this year. You know, really proud of what all of our schools did. Wheeler had 22 of the 20, 22 of the 24 students pass the test this year. Fisher had, you know, five out of, five out of their six pass the test this year. You know, it's just incredible where we're, where we're heading with this. So we took, we took the 14 kids, third grade kids that haven't passed the test. We took those kids and we analyzed what's, you know, what is, what's going on, why they can't pass the test, or why are they struggling with that? And there's a story inside the story with that, and it is 13 of those 14 students that haven't passed the test, and I think they will. I think you're going to find out that we're going to get closer to about 92, 93% even before the school year ends. But 13 of those 14 are English learners. In other words, they didn't learn English. That's not their first language. Four of those 14 are not only EL students, but they're special ed students, a combination of the, they have a learning disability. Really hard to identify students before they get into second, third grade, whether they have a learning disability or not, especially when they don't speak the English language. One of those students is special ed. 11 of the 14, and that's, that's significant. 11 of the 14 are new to Speedway. So we didn't work with these students for the last two or three years. 11 of the 14 are new to Speedway. Two of those 14, two of those 14 moved in weeks before the test. Not, one of them moved in. Actually, we got a score where a person did not pass in another school, and then they moved in the day after testing ended. So, you know, I feel great where we're at with this. I think our program is, is working. I think that we are going to be in the mid 90s of those students that, the third graders this year. I wouldn't be surprised if we're not up in the 70% of our second graders that retake that. So just kudos to our teachers, our instructional coaches, our principals. You know, couldn't be, couldn't be happier where we are right now at iRead 3.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Couple of questions. So first, in case it's not clear, I'm not 100% sure I'm clear. I think I am. But I'm, but there's a very good chance, I feel like our audience may not be clear. The reason that we talk about, you know, six kids taking the test, or 13, these smaller numbers, is because the other group of the third graders passed it to second graders.
That's correct.
Right?
That is correct.
And so it's not like we're only giving it to a few kids. I mean, we have got this great thing going where we've got second, you know, 60% this year. So there will be 40% plus whatever new people.
That is correct.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, I, I continue to be concerned, and so I want to say it out loud, with just us making sure that we are evaluating and adapting our third grade curriculum, which prior to 60% of the second graders having passed the test, was focused on getting the third graders to pass the test. And since you now have this weird situation where you've got potentially more children in your class who have already passed the test in August of the third grade year, and I know there's been a lot of stuff going, but that, I think, just has to continue to be a evolving concern, process, focus. And I, and I know it is.
Yeah, there's no question that that is. This is the first year we've done it, and we're looking and like, hmm, what works? What doesn't work? What is the? And it, it's also kind of a revolving door sometimes with students coming in and out. And, I mean, we get, get them to where they, we think we, they need to be, and then they move. And then, right behind them is someone that moves in that's kind of at the same spot, and we, we start over again. But, you know, again, kudos to our teachers and our instructional coaches for those people that are patients to deal with those students and those. I really feel like if we can keep them for a year and a half, two years, we'll get them where they need to go. So really, really pleased where it's at so far.
Well, and I guess the only other thing I'll say is that I think it's important for the community that I, that you have a little bit of a sense of just, you know, these sorts of things, because these numbers get published and are a comparator all the time, but yet the things that you hear Mr. Disney talking about, such as, you know, 13 of the students moving, one of, one of those 13, which, I mean, and that's, you know, a single one, but when it's one of 13, is, is a large percentage, is someone who failed the test someplace else. And that goes on our numbers. And so when we have our numbers that are stacked up against other schools, you know, we've got an answer for all these things. And I would venture to say that, that we are in relatively elite company, that our assistant superintendent can, can tell us exactly why each of the students did not pass. I mean, I just don't think that happens in other places. And so, community, you guys are in great hands.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that we have not mentioned about iRead is, first time ever, next year, if we have someone that moves into our corporation outside of the state or outside of the country, and they're in the fourth, fifth, or sixth grade, they're going to have to take the iRead test. So if they have not taken that test, have not passed that test, and they come into us, move into us, so there's a, I remember one time you mentioned, what are we going to do with the, the students that did pass? I think we're, we're okay with that. I don't know if we've spent much time with that yet. It's like, hmm, I wonder what we're going to do there. But it is a, and you continue to take the test two times a year, or three times a year, once originally, once before the end of school, once in summer school, until you reach the seventh grade. Now, there is a thing called a good cause exemption. Good cause exemption means, now, if you don't pass the test, you're supposed to be retained. So you say, well, that, are we going to retain all these students? Probably not. There's going to be a thing called a good cause exemption that we can give, and that moves them on. Now, the difference is, we used to do that, too. We'd move them on, they didn't have to take the test. Now, if we move them on, we can move them on to the next grade level. We need to provide remediation. We still have to pass the test, though. The good cause exemption doesn't eliminate them from passing the test. So it's just something we're dealing with, something we're learning, and I promise you we're as good as there is, if not the best with this. So like I said, I couldn't be happier where we are right now.
I have a question about the comparators, because I'm not, I think the current third grade year is kind of messy, because not every school corporation chose to have their second graders take the test last year. Right? So if I look at the second grade results, as a corporation, 60% of our second graders passed this third grade exam. In the state, because, was this a requirement for every second grader, or just option?
It was just an option this.
An option.
This year was a requirement.
Okay, that's what I thought.
This year was a requirement.
So this year it was a requirement, and in the state, only 48% of the second graders passed this exam, and 60% of our second graders.
That's correct.
Now, I, I don't know what that means for the 88% of our third graders that have passed this either last year or this year, compared to the state's number. I don't know if they've got, in their 62% pass, whether that's everybody who might have passed last year or this year, or if it's just the students who took the test this year.
You are, you are spot on. That 62% are the, the percentage of students that took the test last year as third graders didn't pass. And then they, they took it this year for the first time, and that's 62% of those students passed.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so I guess the, next year's third grade comparison will be square across the board, because everybody was forced to have their second graders take the test this year. But it's kind of messy looking at the third grade comparison, although our performance is, is, is very nice.
Probably just need to start referring to them as cohorts. You know, this is a second grade cohort, third grade cohort, and probably a better way to refer to them. And if we, we came up with that name, actually, that term, as we were doing this, this week. And it's probably better to say, instead of refer to them as the second or third graders, the cohort of that, that year. Because it does get confusing.
Sure.
And while it's not at all conclusive, it does seem to support our thinking that we've, you know, we're moving in the right direction with what we're doing with the second graders. Now, that, that reality of having such a higher pass percentage.
So I asked the, I asked our principals and our instructional coaches this morning at elementary, and I said, the, so do you think the Oatton-Gillingham training, morphology training, that every one of our elementary teachers have gone through? Do you think that is affecting this at all? And they said, no question. It is putting us ahead of, ahead of the game. So, so anyway, feel very good where we're at with this thing.
I saw a New York Times headline that had to do with, you know, schools biting the bullet and recognizing that they have to go back to the basics, and they were talking about phonics and some other things. But it just made me chuckle, because we, of course, have been doing that, you know, for some time. I'm not sure we ever left the basics.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on the iRead? Okay, then moving on to the 10th agenda item, and thus to acknowledge $175,122.50 of grants that were received by Speedway Schools this last month. The 11th agenda item this evening is the personnel report.
On the, the May 13th, 2025 Personnel Report, we have the following items. Resignation, we have two. Jennifer Collier, who was a cafeteria worker four hours at the Junior High Fisher Building. Neil Blaze, who is a ENL teacher at Speedway High School. We have two teachers that have, that have applied for disability leave. Cassandra Johnson, who is a teacher of eighth grade language arts at the junior high school. And Kelly Noon, and Cassandra will be from now until the end of the year. Then Kelly Noon will be at the start of the school year next year. She'll be on disability leave. Employment. Tia Poole is being recommended as a cafeteria worker at the Junior High Fisher, a six-hour position. Carla Contreras is a four-hour position at Speedway High School in the cafeteria. Libby Dunbar is being, recommendation is to move her to the Director of Special Education. It's just a title change. She's gone from Assistant Director of Special Education now to the Director of Special Education. Robert Wannell is a teacher and head basketball coach at Speedway High School. And Gary Carter is the Assistant Principal at Speedway High School. And my recommendation would be to approve the personnel report as presented.
I recommend we approve the personnel report as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the personnel report as presented? All those in favor of approving the motion to approve personnel report for May 13th, 2025 as presented, please raise a hand. That passes 5-0. The 12th agenda item this evening is a recognition of the visitors in our room and any other business on hand.
If I could, please.
You go first, then I'll go second.
Okay. All right. We have a visitor in our audience tonight that I'm really happy to introduce to you guys, and she is going to be our new principal of Newby Elementary, and that's Ms. Heather Gorgas. So Heather, you want to come up here and tell us a little bit about yourself?
I just, well, good evening. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Well, it's wonderful to be here. My name is Heather, and I'm so excited to join Speedway and Newby Elementary in July. I almost said the fall, but really, it's in, in July this year. I'm coming to Speedway from Avon Schools, where I've been the Assistant Principal and the Principal at River Birch Elementary in Avon for the last 13 years. Throughout this process, I realized that I've raised a generation of kiddos who are graduating high school this year, and my heart really is looking for a town, a community, and a smaller feel to where I can individually know the staff and the students and the families in the community. And so about two years ago, once I started looking for that, I saw the Speedway posting and thought, this is an answer, this is a prayer answered. So I'm coming to you very excited professionally, and then I brought three fourths of my family here, my son's not here. This is my husband, Brad. This is my daughter, Maren. She's 14. She'll be in high school next year. And then I have a son who's 17. His name's Brody, and he will be a senior, graduating in the spring of 2026 next year. So thank you for having me.
It's so nice to meet you.
It is.
Happy to have you here.
Thanks.
Okay.
Welcome to Speedway, Heather.
Glad to have you.
My turn. Well, I know everyone's watching this meeting and not the Pacers game right now, but I would like.
What is the score? Do we have an update? I mean, hey Siri?
We only have four more hours of this meeting, so you might want to record the Pacers. But I would like to let everybody know, next month, the June meeting, we're having Policy Analytics come to our meeting, and they are going to give us a A to Z on the legislation. So there's a lot of buzz out there on, not just buzz, but there's a lot of information on 144-page bill, Senate Bill 1, that we're going to kind of dissect and kind of go through and what that looks like for the state and for our school corporation. And it's going to be a great meeting to tune in to, to be informed. And Policy Analytics is a group we use, and they'll bring their A-team here, and we'll probably be one of the first schools to, to hear their, their response to Senate Bill 1. And I'm sure they have over 50, 60 schools they represent. So they're going to be busy, and we're going to be kind of number one. So the second Tuesday in June, you might want to tune in for that one. So just want to let people know, been asking, and that's going to let people know, been asking, and that's going to be where we're at and reset what we do. And we're going to have to look at everything. I know that much. So we're excited to end this school year with graduation. The class 2025 only has a few days left. And we're proud of them. I know this board's proud. And we're excited to get to that point for them. So thank you, board members.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Okay. Well, then we will adjourn to approve claims. Thank you all very much for being here.